Alrighty, welcome everybody, welcome to the special episode of Brownsville Tech Live. And as most of you know, we've been covering the city commission candidates for the last several weeks. And we've been conducting interviews and in the house tonight, we've got Mr. Louis Teherina, who is running for city commissioner for district four. Louis, welcome to the show.
Daniel, thank you for having me.
It is great to have you on, sir. How, how has your day been today?
Oh, today was a, today was a busy Monday. I just had a bunch of meetings, so I was just in the office all day today. I office in the Coca-Cola building downtown. So I was just in the office all day and yeah, and then now this is the last one of the day.
Well, definitely, we are glad that you joined us tonight. And could you tell us a little bit about yourself, where you were born, what schools you went to, what you know, professional credentials you have and basically what made you run for, for office?
Yeah, so yeah, so I'm from Brownsville. I was born and raised here. My, my family's been in Brownsville for several generations. My, I think it was my great, great grandfather. He ran the first telegraph lines in downtown Brownsville from an office there. He had an office, yeah, too, an office in Matamoro. So I got deep roots here in Brownsville. I was educated here, grew up here till I was eighteen, then I went off to college. And I, I ran track and cross country for the TCU in Fort Worth. And, and I lived there in Fort Worth for a few years for college. And then I went to Austin. I worked for a nonprofit in Austin. And then I, and then I jumped into real estate in Dallas. And I worked in Dallas for, for six years before the pandemic. And so I lease, I lease and sell shopping centers for a living. And, and I knew I always wanted to come back to, to Brownsville. So I had started getting some listings in, in the valley. And, and then the pandemic hit and you know, real estate professionals, we work on commission. And so, so yeah, the pandemic, nobody was shopping. That means nobody was signing new leases. That means there was no transactions being had. So I think I did like four deals in 2020. So moved back to Brownsville. And you know, there's a lot happening. I saw the growth that was happening here in Brownsville. And, and I decided, you know what, it's, it's time to come home. And it's, it's time to, to, you know, take the, the skills that I learned out there and apply them here. And so that, that's what I've done. My first project was the Sears redevelopment. And, and so, yeah, so in 2019, we, we were representing True Fit at the time our company was. And, and so they had had me working as the, the local market, they call it the local market expert. So I kind of work with, I work with the client and then, and then we go in and, and we look for the right site. And I, I don't know if you remember, there used to be a gym war back in the day. It was when the Gold's Gym Express closed and then Crunch came in. And so there was, everyone was jockeying for position and Truth It wanted it, they wanted a good site. So we were able to acquire the Sears and then we signed that lease. And then the pandemic hit and, and that's when we were able to get the, the main event and later Perry's Pizza. So that was really my springboard in commercial real estate. And I worked on the Chipotle that, that we brought to Barrez Line Road. I've worked on, I, I did the, what was it, the gas station there on, on Barrez and Price, that new one. So I, I worked on a couple of deals here in, in Brownsville and I work all over. And so what really made me run was, you know, I'm from district four. And, and you know, district four is, you know, I've said in my campaign, it's the district that's, that's, it's on the west side. It's on the other side of the tracks. It's really been a district that's been forgotten. And, and I really think that, you know, the skills that, that I have in the private sector, I think I can convert them over to the public sector. And really, you know, I, I've said Brownsville's growing. There's, there's no question about it. Brownsville's grown. The question is, what direction is Brownsville going to grow in? And so, you know, as, you know, fifth generation here and, you know, being a stakeholder in Brownsville, that was, that was really inspiring me to run. And, and you know, we have great candidates. I don't think district four is going to, is, is, is going to be, it's going to be well represented regardless of who wins. And so I, I just want to just, you know, tell the voters, this is who I am. These are the skill sets that I bring and hopefully that's, you know, something that they want to vote for.
Yeah. Well, definitely, it's, it's definitely exciting to have somebody with the kind of experience to attract business. Because I think that's one of the things that we need urgently, right? In, in, in our city leadership is people that actually know how to attract business. I mean, I've been a benefactor of some of your projects. I mean, I am a member of that True Fit right there at Sunrise Mall. So I'm there just about every day. So thank you for that, you know? And, you know, I've been to main event a few times, you know, as well. I've been to Perry's once. You know, and, and, and you know, you've, once again, there's a lot of pizza places, right? So I've got my preference of pizza and stuff like that and so forth. But definitely those have been a big, big, big thing for Brownsville. Because you know, I'll be honest with you, we were pretty much concerned, you know, when Sears, you know, left. And then of course, you know, it was empty for a while. So the concern, you know, was what was going to happen to the mall, right? You know, what was going to happen to the mall? Were we going to end up like Via Vista in Harlingen, right? I mean, that's always the biggest fear. I mean, you know, a ghost town, right? And so, you know, when it was announced, you know, True Fit was going in, great, that was a good thing. And then of course, main event. And I'd been reading, you know, quite a bit on, on, you know, how the malls are actually transitioning, you know, in a, into more like entertainment hubs, you know, where you've got, you know, more restaurants, more entertainment, more, you know, gym kind of stuff. It's, it's not just a trend that's happened here, but it's happened in a lot of places. And that's a good thing, you know, the old traditional anchor store of yesteryear is gone, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the world's changing, the, you know, the internet, e-commerce, it's really changing the game for a lot of retailers.
You know what was so surprising, this Sunday, I had to, I, I went over to the T-Mobile there by the pizzeria place, right? Cause I needed to cancel an account. And I ended up finding out that they were remodeling, so I had to go to the one in the mall. And so I told my daughter, hey, why don't you stay here and you know, I'll go inside. Well, I kid you not, it was packed for a Sunday, believe it or not. I was like, I went into T-Mobile and I said, hey, I want to cancel my account. They said, sir, well, you can't, you gotta do it via the phone. I said, okay, well, that's great. Cause they had like a ton of people there. Probably buying, you know, brand new iPhones or something like that, but it was packed and that's a good thing. That is a good thing because, you know, you know, for quite a while, we just, we were, we were concerned about, about that and so forth. So I thank you for, for your efforts to bring those businesses. And I wish we'd get a PF Chang's. I really wish we'd get a PF Chang's, but I'll, I'll be patient, you know?
It's, yeah, we've, we've tried to work on it and it's, it's, we've definitely talked to them before. Our company represents them up in San Antonio, but right now they're, you know, they've said that they're cooling it. You know, there's a, there is a talk of a Ruth Chris that's starting to look. Yeah, so there, there's different options. I mean, Brownsville, I think Brownsville has, there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest from national retailers, I think, but there's just not a lot of opportunities for them to go in. You know, I think, you know, the Johnny Carino's, that one was the one that everyone was trying to go for, for a while. And I think it's Palanca Grill, that's, that's who got that. So yeah, so it's, it's, it's just a matter of getting the right real estate and as things grow. And, and that's kind of what I address in, in, you know, in, in trying to grow, you know, economic development. And on the west side, because, because you know, one of the things that the city really needs, you know, is, is more revenue. And because there are a lot of resources that, that they're, they're outputting. And so for them, you know, the inputs and outputs have to match up. And so, you know, a developed city of, you know, quarter million people, you know, we need more trade areas. And you know, more, more places for people, you know, to shop and dine and get entertained. And you know, I love what's going on in downtown. That's part, that's part of it too. And, and, and I think the, the local entrepreneur, the, the artisan, the, I think that's, that's the place that you really see it starting to incubate. You know, you see it, you see it at the farmer's market. And I'm really excited for the cannery. So I mean, the city has done some great things, you know, to promote that. I mean, E-Bridge is, you know, the startup programs that they have. I mean, these things are, these things are working. It's just, you know, growth takes time. And so it's, and sometimes you have growing pains and sometimes things don't work. But you know, what, what, what I've seen since I started working in, in real estate about 10 years, you have seen a change in, 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 you know, not just, you know, cause I would go to conferences all the time. And it would be McAllen would be there and you know, Edinburgh would be there. And you know, sometimes I wouldn't see Brownsville about 10 years ago, but you know, you know, about six, seven years ago, when we got that, I think when Noel came in, there was, there was a lot more attention. And, and that's when, you know, you know, we were going after space industry and we're going after retailers. And, and so I think, you know, we're, we're doing the right activities, you know, it's, 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 you know, we're talking to the right people. And that's what yields results. When you're not, when you're not talking to people and you're not out there promoting, you know, you, you can't, you just hope, you can't just hope, you know? And so that's the biggest change that I've seen. And, and that's kind of why I want to, you know, be a representative for district four. Cause I think, you know, one with what I've learned in the private industry and being able to, to, to apply it to Brownsville. You know, I think as a commissioner, you're able to really, you know, get out there, you know, get the word out. Cause I, I've seen, I've seen commissioners at a lot of our, a lot of our conferences and they've been out there promoting their cities. And I work well with a lot of the other cities too, because I, I know them. And I think that's another thing that I'll be able to bring to the commission is, you know, I know a lot of the other cities. Because for, you know, in real estate, we have to, we have to work, you know, planning zoning, you know, special use, replating. You know, so we, we work on a lot of different things with, you know, with, with the city. And so I, I'm excited to actually bring that to the table too. And, and one of the biggest reasons that I'm running, because you, you can't get anything done as one person. And so you have to be able to, and, and everybody on the commission, you know, I, I've had some type of relationship with them in the past, be it through business, be it through school, be it through just in the community. And so I, I think I'm able to, to be that conduit between, you know, everybody. And, and just be able to have that conversation. And that's, and that's really what I want to bring is just, you know, independent thinking. A guy that knows, you know, has seen it in other cities and is able to help apply it. And then, and then work with the commission, because you know, essentially that's what you have to do.
Yeah. Well, definitely, I will say that it is very encouraging to see our downtown area get revitalized. And, and truly revitalized. I mean, I had never thought I'd ever see the day where we would have restaurants and bars down there. A bookstore, by the way, down there as well, you know? It, it kind of makes you want to go back to downtown again to eat and to drink and to read a book. You know, it's, it's something that quite honestly, we didn't do for a very long time, you know? Prior to all of that happening, right? But this weekend, before I, I, I met with you this weekend, I kind of spent some time circling around downtown. I wanted to kind of get a feel for what was happening down there, you know, what was happening, what was changing. And, and I, I just felt this positivity, you know, this positivity that's going on down there. It's encouraging to see people out there, you know, at some of these restaurants, you know, whether they're catching a brunch or they're catching a drink or catching a book. And you know, I, I just went touring all over the place and I started seeing potential, you know, potential, you know? And so it is very encouraging to see what's going on down there. And, and see it happening, you know, even my daughter, you know, who quite honestly didn't, we didn't go to downtown very often. Now, you know, wants to go down there to eat, even, even if it's at Space Dog, you know, to catch a hot dog or something, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of, it's really encouraging to see that. And, and definitely, you know, we need leaders that understand business, you know, that truly understand business. You know, now whether, whether we attract, you know, you know, anything beyond locals, you know, I don't know. You know, one of the things is, for example, in, in my case, if I want to, I, I know there's, there, there's a few pizza places down there and I prefer to go eat pizza there than going to Pizza Hut, you know? Or going to Domino's, you know, it's just different, something different from the usual, you know? So, well, one of the things, what do you think are some of the most pressing issues that you believe that, you know, are facing not only the city, but the district currently?
Yeah. Well, so our campaign's really focusing on four issues that we're really trying to highlight. I, I think the biggest one is just growing, growing the economy. In district four, in district four, like I said, you know, it's, it's a district that's on the other side of the tracks. And, and, and when I say that, it's just the district that, you know, naturally the development just didn't go to that side. And so when you see district four, we have a lopsided tax base. And so, and so the resources that are going into district four, you know, we don't, the inputs and outputs aren't, aren't meeting up. And so you, you're starting to see it, starting to happen with the tractor supply. And then I think you saw that Starbucks got announced across the street from the, from the Circle K. There's a McDonald's that's going in. So, so it's starting to happen already. And so I think that's a trade area that's, that, that's going to grow. Like the other day, I, I, I coach, I coach cross country and track as volunteer. And I was at a track meet at Veterans and I had been there all day. And, and I was running between, between the, the running events to go get something to eat. So I Googled and it was far to go get something to eat from veterans. And so, so I mean, we've got a lot of people that are out there and there's no services that are being provided. So everything's, you know, going to one area. And so that's one of the things that I want to look at is, because we, we do want to grow. And the only way to grow is to have the resources to grow. And so like, we need to make sure that Brownsville has those resources. Because right now, we're putting a lot of demands on the city and those are part of those growing pains.
And one of the things you talked about is E-Bridge, right? And you know, I know that they've been around for a few years, but I, I do know that, you know, you hear some people complain that a lot of times, you know, if there's, you know, any kind of grants or stuff like that, they, they don't always know about them. After the fact, you know? I mean, what do you think we can do to improve letting people know that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think, I think going, like, if, if you're like, because I think they have these, I, I know they have it online and because I've looked at these grants before. Cause you know, I've looked at, I've looked at downtown projects, because those downtown projects, those grants are there to help revitalize these, you know, what, what, what I'm calling in our campaign are, are historic treasures. And, and so they're costly, you know, to, you have to put a fire suppression system in, in the second floor. And so that's why you don't see a lot of these second floors being activated. And so they're putting in these grants to, you know, to kind of spur that, that development. Cause we want to see that in downtown. So I think just going, and if you know you're going to be investing or you know, you're thinking about it, start getting involved, start going out to E-Bridge. I know that they have like, I think it's coffee every Wednesday in the morning. And they have those talks and a lot of those talks are, you know, the startups, they have, they have the applications online. And, and then, and then you can, and then you can even, you know, go and look at the, the board meetings or go attend one of the meetings. I think it's, it's good to just know what the process is. Cause I, I was, I was looking at, at buying a building downtown and, and I went through that whole process, you know? What do I need? Well, you know, I need, I need to get, you know, all my, you know, permits in place. I need to have my, my contractor bids. I have to have all these different check marks. And, and, and that's the thing that like, you know, I see it in the private sector in my business, like when we're, when we're negotiating contracts. Like at the end of the day, what's in the corners of that, of that document, of that contract? And so, you know, businesses and bureaucracies, that's how they, that's how they operate. The, you know, your hands are, their hands are tied unless you got every single checkbox. And it's like, oh, I'm sorry. It, it's like, you know, I, when I went to go file for, for the ballot, you know, the rule is, you gotta give a, I think it was like a cashier's check. It can't be a regular check. It can't be card. It can't be. And so, you know, I had to run to the bank and you know, that was the last check mark to apply for the ballot. So you know, it's, it's, it's just getting, I think just getting familiar with it. And, but, but I know, I know they have, they have, they have sessions for people as well. So I think just getting involved, looking, going down there or, you know, going online.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that I talked about in the last couple of interviews with some of the other candidates, I kind of shared my story with regards to my own experience with dealing with, with the City Plaza permitting office. You know, I had a, a tax preparation business a few years ago that I started, had it for two years. And I decided to move, which is kind of dumb. I decided to move from a building on 12th Street back over towards a little north of, of here. And because of traffic, because I anticipated a lot of traffic, right? And I ended up in this brand new building, right? And what happened in my case was that I could not get a certificate of occupancy because the landlord who built the building had no plans to have anybody with a restaurant. And so the ceiling, the inner part of the attic went from point to point. It was open. It was open. Well, as soon as, yes, as soon as the landlord decided to rent the, to somebody who was going to start a restaurant, which by the way, was right next to my establishment, there was no firewall. So as a result of that, the, the, the person who was putting the restaurant together spent like a month or two trying to get that going. In the meantime, I couldn't get a certificate of occupancy, okay? And I would go back to City Plaza back and forth, trying to inquire, hey, what's going on? Putting pressure on the landlord, hey, when are you going to get this done? I said, because for me, in my business, tax season was from January till April. And after that, there ain't no business, right? Well, believe it or not, I lost a ton of money because I could never get that certificate of occupancy. And then add insult to injury, it turned out that AT&amp;T and Spectrum weren't, their internet service actually ended a block away. So they wanted us to pay like seven grand to actually run a line from where it ended all the way to the building. Oh my gosh, it was, it was a complete nightmare, but you have no idea how many times I went over to City Plaza back and forth. And I thought to myself, there's just got to be an easier way, right? And, and you know, mine's, mine's, you know, that's my story. I'm pretty sure other people have gone through the same thing, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think there's a couple, I think there's a couple of things in there that, you know, there's, you know, I, I'm sorry that that happened to you. I mean, that's, that's, that's really unfortunate. I, so I represent a lot of tenants and that's what I do. I represent tenants and I represent landlords. And so, you know, when we negotiate leases, those are, those are things that, that, that we put in there too. Like if, if, if you're not able to get a certificate of occupancy, you have an out, you know, there's different things that, you know, the landlord has to be responsible for. And, but those are, those are unforeseen things that, that, that you went through. And then, and then what happened was, was something got triggered. And so when, when, when the restaurant came in, it triggered the firewall inspection, the inspector comes in, you know? And so you get red tagged because it's not, it's not to code, the code says. And so, and that's what I'm talking about, having your, the, you know, where they're just following the rules and the rule state that has to be. So a way that we can alleviate that is that we can look at, we can look at, we're the policymakers. We're not the ones, we're not the ones that are in, in, we're not working in the business. We're working on the business. And so we're not there to tell people how to do their job. We're there to make it easier for them to do their job. And so we can create policies that are, that are pro-business. And so for, for example, something that the city's currently working on right now is this grease trap issue. So you know, grease traps, it's, it's the same thing. When you have a restaurant, there's a minimum requirement. It gets triggered and it's a grease trap. So we've got these old buildings downtown that we're having to, to, to break the concrete, put these grease traps in. And so the bookstore, for example, they're, they want to, they want to have, you know, just serve coffee. And they're being asked to put in a grease trap. And so, yeah, exactly. But if, if you look at, I think the, I, I know it's, it's crazy because it's, it's like a 10,000, it's like a $10,000 expense just to serve coffee, when you're not even going to be putting grease down, down, you know, down the drain. And so, and, and so, but what the city is doing is they're being proactive and they're seeing what other cities have done. And, and they look, they, they cited an example, I think it was about a month ago or a couple of meetings ago, that there was a Dutch Brothers in Harlingen that got a permit without even having to put a grease trap in. So they put a new construction. So there's, there's ways to make policies so that we can empower our city employees to be able to, to transition this. And that's, and those are the types of things I want to, that I want to contribute and work with on the, on the city. Because, because you're right, that, that's what's hindering our growth in certain areas. Right. They are, are these policies that it's just, it's going to cost me this much to, or it's, or, or something you didn't know. And then you lose a whole tax season. I mean, that's, that's, that's a deal.
Yeah. And yeah, it was definitely, and you know, I haven't, I haven't resuscitated that business after that, after that situation. Well, there's other reasons, right? But, but definitely after that, it was definitely, it was definitely an experience, you know? Luckily, the first time around, I was already in an established building. I didn't have a restaurant next to me or anything like that. In fact, the sad part about the whole thing is I don't even think the restaurant lasted more than a month after I left, to top it off. When they opened and they, and they left, you know, they, they just, it was just crazy. But definitely it's something that, you know, hopefully, you know, we can improve, you know, to make things easier for, for people that have businesses and want to start businesses or relocate, you know? Because, you know, you know, I was thinking, you know, as I was driving this weekend going through downtown, I said, what, what, what else could we possibly be cool to put down here, you know? I mean, there's already some neat stuff down here, but.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm excited for what's going on downtown. I mean, you know, the city's starting to, you know, to, I think, work on a master plan for downtown. And so, you know, if, if, if I get elected, I, I'm going to be able to, to be a part of those discussions, you know? And, and, and work with, you know, our master planning. And, and I was in Dallas, I lived in downtown Dallas, I think for four years. And, and I saw a lot of the revitalization that was going on in downtown Dallas. I remember when they enclosed their farmer's market. So it was real reminiscent to see our farmer's market really grow, you know? And it's going to have an indoor or semi indoor facility. And, and to now see what's going on in our downtown and master planning. And there's, there's an area of, of Dallas called like Oak Cliff and the Bishop Arts District. So that area has really blended a lot, because you know, you, you've got a lot of different people that are, that are interacting in downtown. And so when we're master planning, we have to make sure that we have space for, you know, the people that are walking across, the people that are dining at night, the people that are working during the day, and you know, like the city, the county employees. And so being able to curate, you know, an experience for all of them and making sure that, you know, everyone is thought of, you know? And it's a live, work, play experience. And then, you know, and then making sure that it's safe, you know, downtown. I think that's been, I think that's been a big thing. And you know, I, I gotta just commend the city again. I mean, they, this, I think was the last meeting or two meetings ago, they've, they've been talking about downtown and the safety. And, and I work downtown and I, I'm right across the street from that city parking lot. And you know, I, I've seen, I've seen, you know, police on their bicycles. I've seen, you know, them, you know, patrolling the area. And, and, and it's, and it's good to know that, you know, you know, if we're, if, if we're going to invest in downtown, we got to make sure that, that we protect it. Because, you know, people are coming and spending dollars. And we need to make sure that it's a, it's a safe environment for everybody.
Well, one of the things I wanted to talk about a little bit is obviously the parking situation downtown. I personally, I'll be honest with you, I'm not a fan of parallel parking, never have been. Partly because I actually am the only person, I think, that flunked the parallel park and still got his driver's license, by the way. Yes, I'll admit it. But in reality, I've never liked parallel parking. But one of the things obviously is, you know.
Cars are starting to do it themselves now. The cars are starting to do it themselves now.
I know, I know. I've seen that, right? It would, it would be a godsend for me when I got my license, right? But one of the things, obviously, you know, we've always had a parking problem downtown. And you know, we do have a parking garage downtown that I think we're now back to using it again as a parking garage. But what's the future of parking downtown? Do you see more parking garages, less parking garages? I'm personally a fan of parking garages, but that could just be me.
There, yeah, I mean, it's, it, it just depends on how we want to grow the city. You know, I think it's going to come down to that, to that master plan, you know? There's, there's going to be a capacity. I mean, we're going to see how many people we're trying to fit into downtown. And, and so I think, but there's, I think there's, there's a big piece of land that, you know, a lot of people forget about. And it's a switch yard. That switch yard is a huge piece of land. I think one, one of, one of the, you know, the ideas and one of the things that in, because you know, we've, we've done master plans for downtown before. This isn't the first time that we're trying to do that. And, and in one of the editions of the downtown master plan is connecting. And, and what I talk about in our, in our campaign is stitching district four. You know, district four was divided through, through a rail line. And so we have the opportunity to stitch the community together. And so the sixth and seventh street connector roads, that's, you know, punching sixth and seventh street out across the switch yard and into Amigo Land. Because you have a lot of land there in Amigo Land and, and you know, there's still that project that they're trying to work. I think it's the county is trying to work that project on. And, and, you know, there, there's still that project that they're trying to work. I think it's the county is trying to work that project on the riverfront, so.
Right, I was gonna talk about that, the Riverfront Project, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I, I think there's a lot of synergies, you know, to, you know, to, to, to do that. And then if you do that, then what's right smack dab in the middle is the switchyard. And the switchyard could be an entertainment venue, uh, of outdoor standing room only. Uh, it could be another, you know, you know, I, I even talked to somebody about it, it's like, that could be where we grow some Brerofest. I mean, that could be, you know, that's, you know, way, a, a way bigger piece of land. I know we have tradition in, in Washington Park and I remember, I remember when, when we did it in, in Linear Park and, you know, you know, we went, we went straight back. But, but at the end of the day, I mean, I mean, if we're gonna grow it, you know, there, there's options to do it. And so I think just, you know, that's just, my point is that, you know, I wanna bring out of the box ideas, uh, and, and just try to. You know, try to see how we can work with the assets that, that we currently have.
Right, well, one of the things you touched on right now was with regards to the Riverfront Project. And I know that there was a couple of investors from California that were looking into, um, into that Riverfront Project. And one of the things I remember in my research that I did of, actually about two election seasons back with another set of candidates. Was I came across a, uh, a set of, of diagrams. Um, with regards to the Capitol Theater, not just the Capitol Theater, but also the building adjacent to it. And one of the things that caught my attention was the fact that there were plans to actually build a, a theater like. Uh, like, almost like a performance hall, uh, center, right? And I, I don't know if, if we, when we spoke this weekend, if I talked about the fact that I'd been in McAllen Friday. Attending a, a concert that my daughter was in at, at the McAllen Performance Center. And I was just so impressed by, by the building itself and so forth. And I, and as I was sitting there looking at this, I thought to myself, gee, we need to have something like that. Because, hey, you know, the TSC Performance, uh, Center is great, but I think it's too small. And of course, there's still a few issues there, whether people can use it or not use it, when to use it. I think there's even a little bit of contention between UTRGV and TSC, I know that for a fact. But one of the things that I talked about in the last couple of interviews was the fact, the need for a multi-venue, right? We've had an opportunity to vote on a multi-venue, and I don't like to use the term arena because I'll get. A lot of the anti-arina folks toss rocks at me when I mention the word arena. But, you know, we lost that vote by very little, twice, right? But, you know, one of my arguments continues to be is the lack of a multi-venue in Cameron County. And I'm gonna say Cameron County is, continues to be a problem because the money keeps on bleeding out of Cameron County. People go out to Adago to a concert, not only do they go out to a concert, but they go out and they eat. And they go out and they shop, and if they're a little tipsy or it's too late, they'll stay over at their hotels, right? And that's money that's, and those are people that are here in Cameron County that are going and spending that money over there. And we just don't have that. And then, of course, you know, we've got the issue where, you know, we, we just lost. UTRGV commencement ceremonies to Edinburgh because they claimed that it was, it was, uh, too cumbersome to have him here in Brownsville. So families have to, have to go to watch their kid graduate all the way to Edinburgh now, right? And then we've got, you know, we learned from the Veterans Memorial State Championship Games that Sam Stadium is just inadequate. It's inadequate, it still is inadequate despite the parking that they did, right? Um, but we need a multi-venue, I mean, what's your take? I mean, what? I mean, do you think it's something that we need, we, we need to eventually look at? Uh, and by the way, and by the way, I'm not advocating that it's just a city responsibility. Uh, one of the things that I put a post out a day or so ago was a public-private partnership between city, county. And maybe a private enter- enterprise, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, yeah, I, I think, I think it's needed, I, I think it needs to be planned for, um. I, you know, it's part of the growth, you know, the growth trajectory, that's just, that's just how we're gonna evolve. You know, if, if you look at the MSA, you know, which is the Metropolitan Statistical Area, uh, you know, we're, we're Brownsville and Harlingen. Brownsville's the number one city, Harlingen's the number two city, San Benito's the number three city, and then so on, so forth in Cameron County. Uh, you look at our numbers between, between, uh, McAllen MSA, which is a McAllen, Edinburgh Mission MSA versus our MSA. They're almost double. And so, and so, so I think what happens a lot of times is. Is we're, we're competing, we're competing with them, but I think there's no, I think there's no question that it is gonna be needed at some point. And so I think planning for it, getting it done i- is something that's important to do. But my, my biggest thing is just making it, making sure that we get it done, but we don't put that burden on the taxpayer. You know, making sure that, you know, it's, it's well-planned out, we know exactly how, how it's gonna be paid for. So that, so that the voter has the option to vote for it, because they know this is how it's gonna be. Because if they don't know, then, then they don't know what they're voting for.
Right, well, that's one of the things I think that was the misconception, um. Was the fact that, you know, there was a belief out there that their property taxes were going to go up, right? That if they passed, and I'll, I'll use the term, the arena, that their property taxes were going to go up. Well, guess what? They still did regardless, right? Arena or no arena, they still went up. The values also went up too, you know? Now, the question is, where should it be located? I mean, I think that the county wanted to centralize that, uh. That arena right over by Mededa, which I think is part of the district that you're running in, right? And, I mean, I understood at the time, I think the county judge said it was because it was right in the central of Cameron County. And I guess the other two cities wouldn't have such a big deal versus it was more to Brownsville. But I really was, I, I, I'm, unfortunately, I don't have that diagram anymore. But it, when it came to the Capitol Theater and what, what I saw was a multi-level, multi-balcony. Performance hall, and I thought that would be kinda cool, even in downtown, you know, to be able to have something like that. You know, to have kind, you know, performances and, and stuff like that, cuz right now, you know, we don't, we don't. I mean, the closest thing we have is the TSC Performance Hall, and even that's underutilized, and there's not really anything else. I mean, sadly, when the Brownsville Event Center was built, it was actually built and it's less capacity than even the Jacob Brown. The old Jacob Brown used to be. So, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll get to a point. I mean, I know there's been talk in the past BISD, uh, having a performance center for, for the students, right? And I know Los Fresnos is just completing one, uh, being built and so forth. So it's just something that I think, you know, is something that we need. Because like I said, it's, it's, it's not just about having the capacity, it's about that money that just continues to bleed to Adago County. It just.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, no, I, I, I agree. I mean, there's, you know, and those are, that's, that's revenue that the city could use to. Enhance a lot, a lot of the things we're talking about, so.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was, uh, a post by somebody that put, uh, sales tax revenue. Uh, controller, state controller, and they, and, you know, they were, they were saying that, you know, our numbers were a little lower than last year's and so forth. And I said, well, yeah, I said, you know, when everybody's going out to McAllen to, you know, watch a concert, eat, shop and stay over. What do you expect, you know? So, and of course, they've got a, a bigger population too, right? I mean, we can't deny that, right?
Yeah, yeah, they have a bigger population, they have more options, and so, but I think, I think what we need to look at is how can Brownsville position itself? And, and how, how does it wanna position ourselves? Because I, you know, I think, I don't think we wanna be McAllen, I think we wanna be Brownsville, but we wanna have the things that McAllen has. And so, so it's just how do we create that?
You know, it's kind of interesting, I've had conversations before with a lot of people, uh, you know, a lot of people in McAllen. I used to work in McAllen for a while. And, you know, one of the things that, when I spoke to a few people, they said, if we had the resources that Cameron County has. Two major airports, a deep water port, right? All the history behind it, plus the island, imagine what we could do, right? So we've got all those opportunities, we've got, we've got, we're sitting on a, on jewels, right? And, and, uh, you know, we've got to, you know, take advantage of that, you know, market it, you know?
Uh, yeah, I don't think there's, there's, there's no question. I mean, we, we, like you said, we have the land port that comes in from Mexico. We have, we have, we have the spaceport, we have the airport, I mean, there's just, we, 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 we've got everything here. So it's just, it's just about everybody working together, and that's what I really love that, that I see that's happening, you know? You see these, cuz I think, you know, in the past, you know, the entities weren't all working together. And, and I think now you really see these public entities working together, trying, you know, trying to grow. Because we know we're gonna grow and just making sure we grow in, in that right direction. Um, and, and, and I think you're right, I mean, industry is what's driving, is what's driving. But I wanna make sure that, you know, we equip our, 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 you know, the young people to have a place to come back to. Um, that's, that's, that's a big thing, and, and District Four is primarily just in BISD. So if we increase, if, if we're able to put the infrastructure there and be able to grow the economy at District Four. We, we inherently are going to grow, uh, the school district as well.
And we've got a couple of comments for some of the, some of the viewers out there. Um, let's see here, let's start from the very beginning here. We've got, uh, Mr. Junior Garza, great job, Louis, I think he knows you. And then we've got, uh, Elizabeth Dierlam, she says, will you bring jobs to the Brownsville area? Uh, and then she goes on, what can you do to make downtown area better? I think you've, you've talked about that already. Then we've got somebody, somebody, and I'm not sure you, I didn't even know this, and you probably. Uh, didn't either, but they're talking about the city, the police chief making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I have my doubts, but.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not too familiar with, you know, the, you know, the, you know, these are things that, that have been voted on. And of course, you know, if, if elected, you know, we'll look at, at, at everything, but I'm sure, you know, everything is, is comparative to other cities. And if they're not, then we'll.
Yeah, I mean, hey, if he's making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm actually changing, changing, uh.
Changing career path.
Changing career paths, that's for sure. And then, uh, you know, another viewer says, uh, you know. I live in District Four, we need infrastructure to improve badly, and she specifically talks about flooding. Uh, is there, I mean, I, I know that I originally was, was, was born, uh, well, not that I was born, but. I, I lived down in Southmost and that was always an issue, right down there, you know? It would rain and Southmost would actually like flood, you know? I don't know about downtown, uh, but she mentioned something about flooding issues downtown. Are you aware of any?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've heard, I've heard of flooding issues. I, I live, I live very close to downtown. I, I live off of a rosaca right by the, uh, by, by the zoo. And, yeah, it, 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 you know, right there, when it gets low, it, it does flood. But I know that there's things, you know, that, that are being done, you know, with the deepening of the rosacas. I mean, I know that's something that we're trying, trying to get done to, to be able to be a way that we can drain. Cuz the thing, at the end of the day, it's a flat area, and so we just have to figure out, okay, where, where can we get this water to flow? And so I think, you know, deepening it, and then, uh, the rosacas is going to be, uh, a solution. Uh, but the West Side doesn't have a lot of that, and so I think just looking at our systems and making sure that, you know, that they're. But that's not just the city, that's also, you know, that's the drainage district. And so I know that there, that, that the city has identified, you know, some problems and, and then, you know, they'll have to go talk to, you know, the entities. But, you know, I've talked to some people in, in District Four, um, on some of the, the older neighborhoods on the North Side. That were, that, there were some of the first ones, when it floods, the, some of them, they, they don't have access to their sewer systems for a day or two. And that's an issue, like if you, if, if you, if you, if you're not able to flush the toilet at home for a day or two. I mean, now you're affecting people's livelihoods, and, and that's where the city needs to make sure that, you know, that, you know, we're looking out for our citizens.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that we talked about a little bit, and I think you mentioned it, was obviously Sombra Fest. Um, and there's, I know that in my last interviews, I had a few viewers that wanted me to ask. It actually wasn't on the list of topics that I typically send the candidates, uh, it was just something that somebody wanted me to ask. I said, well, that wasn't a topic I was gonna talk about, but, but we'll, we'll, we'll chat a little bit about it. Yeah, I mean, one of the biggest complaints, obviously, is that, you know, Washington Park is cramped and it's, it's, uh. You know, people have a hard time getting in and out, and of course, parking and so forth. And of course, you know, there's been ideas floated around about, you know, having it over at the sports park. But I'm personally, I understand a lot of the, the, the complaints, you know, why they're, they complain about Washington Park. But one of the things that I kind of countered back to a few people that were asking me, well, you know. Maybe Putnet will eventually be closed down, not that I'm advocating, by the way, for anybody that. That goes to Putnet or works at Putnet, I'm not advocating that, I'm not giving the BISD any ideas. But let's say hypothetically that down the road, that property became available. I mean, that would probably increase, you know, quite a bit of land there. And, and maybe that could be in addition to Washington Park, because I personally like the fact that it is still in downtown. You know, you still have that feel. I mean, what's your take? Should we keep it downtown, or should we move it to the sports park, or, you know?
Uh, uh, like, I'm, I'm very much a man of tradition, I love the history of our city, so I would, I would vote for downtown. Uh, all day long, so I think there's tons of, there's tons of places we can have them. You know, like you said, you know, having it, you know, expanding it into Putnet if that's an opportunity, going to the switchyard, going back to Linear Park. And the cannery, going, going to Amigaland, I mean, there's a lot of different options. I mean, you run into the parade and what side of the parade do you wanna be on and access issues? But, um, I think, you know, that's, Sombra Fest has done a great job, they've been doing this for forty years. I trust, I trust their judgment, I know that, that they think about this, and I'm sure, I'm sure they're talking about it. And I'm sure they'd do even better if they had a bigger venue.
Right, right. Well, definitely, I think on Thursday, that Thursday, I think they had like up to ten thousand people, you know?
That's crazy, that's crazy.
Crazy, right? I mean, I've been there a few times and actually, we've been toying with the idea of actually doing a live down there. But, uh, we're still working through that, you know, we've got, uh, like, uh, mobile vehicle, we'll look, we're looking to buying. And of course, you know, setting up a mobile studio, really, so our, our goal eventually is to, you know, go down there and. Do a live for the four days, but, uh, we're not there yet, but we're getting there.
Yeah, no, I think social media has really been, you know, what's promoted the event, you know? Cuz I think, I don't think it's just people from Brownsville anymore that are coming to this, I mean, people, I, I know people are coming home. That used to live in Brownsville to come to these events, and then people from outside, from outside of Brownsville that are in the valley, they're coming, so, I mean. It's social media really.
I mean, even the McAllen mayor was in the parade.
Yeah, he was in the parade with Tino, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so it was, it was like, wow, you know? In fact, I'm, I've, I've been trying to reach out to him to pop in for Brownsville Tech Live. I was gonna do Brownsville Tech Live, the McAllen edition.
Well, yeah, that'd be, no, no, it's cool, it's, it's good to see that, you know, we're working, you know, well, you know, with, with each other.
Right, you know, absolutely. Well, I know that this other topic I wanted to talk about, it, it's not really part of District Four. But, you know, as a commissioner, you're an equal vote when it comes to the airport. You know, as you know, you know, um, you know, obviously, the airports, a terminal expansion was a great thing, you know, it really was. Uh, much, much more capacity than we had before, obviously, we still have runway expansion that we need to do. Uh, you know, I think the plan was to go to ten thousand feet, twelve thousand feet, I can't, I can't remember what the, what the number was. But it was enough to support, you know, larger planes, primarily for cargo and as well as bigger planes and so forth. But, you know, one of the things that I think we still have to, have to deal with is trying to encourage. People to fly Brownsville, you know, that's one of our biggest problems is that we still have people flying. You know, from, from the other airports, you know, Harlingen primarily because of Southwest. And of course, you know, on occasion, people go over to McAllen to fly Allegiant. And by the way, we've had Allegiant here before, right? We recently had Avelo. And I'm not necessarily convinced that it, that they pulled out because of, they didn't have demand. In fact, if you look at their business models, especially when it comes to Avelo and Allegiant, it's not uncommon for them to pull in and pull. Pull out of markets, they do it every single day. There's not an article on the internet where I don't see Avelo pulling here. And going there and everywhere, but, you know, obviously, Southwest is, is, is huge for Harlingen. And, you know, uh, but what can we do to encourage people to continue to, to at least fly Brownsville? Cuz I'll tell you, there's some people, believe it or not, I don't know what rock they live under, but some people had the gall to ask me that, oh, y'all have an airport? I was like, uh, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
I mean, what can we do? We, we've, you know, I was a little disappointed that Avelo pulled out. I mean, I'm not sure if they were the right fit for us, you know? I mean, they may have had like forty-nine dollar flights, but then, you know, I heard that, you know, if you wanted, you know, um. Extra baggage, you pay for it, if you wanted, you know, drinks, everything you gotta pay for, and if you wanted a pillow, that was even extra. You know, uh, if you wanted to stretch your legs, it was extra. I mean, I don't know if those were some of the factors, but what can we do to? Market and promote our airport much?
Well, we've got. Well, we've got, I mean, we've got challenges when it comes to it. I mean, to have the amount of people that we have and to have five airports, you know, Reynosa, Matamoros, Brownsville, Harlingen, McAllen, to have that many, I mean, you know, you're competing with everybody else. And so, you know, we're, we're price sensitive and, and the low cost carrier is, is Southwest. So if we can't get Southwest to Brownsville, then we're not gonna be able to compete on price. Um, you know, uh, I, I, I go to Monterrey, you know, every once in a while and, and I was looking at, you know, trying to fly over there and it was like three hundred and seventy seven dollars after my bags and everything, you know, and it cost me fifty dollars round trip on a bus. And it's, you know, three hours, you know, just going over there. So, you know, I have to, you know, calculate the, the risk assessment and see, you know, I want to take that bus, but, but at the end of the day, you know, if you're price sensitive, like, you know, that's what's, you're gonna take that bus. Um, you know, and then I think there's, there, we gotta think out of the box, you know? What are, what, what's the one destination that people want to go to that nobody in the valley offers? And it's San Antonio.
Right.
Nobody offers a San Antonio because, well, it's too close to McAllen. It's, you know, maybe it's too close for, you know, to Harlingen, but you know, can, can we, you know, San Antonio is opening up a new uh, terminal right now. So, and we just opened one. So, you know, can we subsidize an airline? Can they subsidize an airline and get, you know, two hundred dollar round trip flights? You know, from Brownsville to San Antonio? Because now what you're doing is you're reversing it. Now McAllen people, now Harlingen people will come to Brownsville to go to San Antonio because nobody else flies to San Antonio. So we, we gotta figure out ways to compete that, you know, nobody else is doing. Cause yeah, everyone's going to Houston, everyone's going to Dallas, you know, McAllen's going to Vegas and, and Cancun and Mexico City. So that, that would be my idea on, 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 on passenger. But I think where we need to focus on, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's a profit center for the city, just like the landfill, just like, you know, the golf center, you know, it's and so how can we monetize that? How can the city benefit from it? And I think, you know, it's part of those growing pains. We, we've got the infrastructure, like the city built the infrastructure. It's exactly what I'm saying we need to do on the West Side. Is they put it there because they know it's gonna grow. You know, there's a spaceport and you know, whether we like it or not, the spaceport is there and it's the first of its kind in the U S. And who knows in how many years? It's the way that an airport makes money, it has to be a connecting place. Where do you spend money? Money at the Houston Airport, you spend money at the Dallas Airport. How do we get Houston people and Dallas people to connect in Brownsville? Well, we have a point to point in the spaceport. We're connecting, you're gonna fly to Brownsville Airport. And then you're gonna, you're gonna eat at the Brownsville Airport and then there's a, a bus or something that's gonna take you to, to Starbase. And you're gonna fly to the, the coast of France in two hours. That's the reality that we're on.
Right.
That's the reality that we're on. So i- it's just a matter of time where Brownsville becomes a connecting destination. People are coming south or people are coming north from Mexico to Brownsville to get to France in two, in two hours. And so who knows how long that's gonna happen? And so it's part of those growing pains, but I, I think, you know, you hit it with, you know, the cargo. I think, you know, we're the gateway to the Americas. Well, you know, if you look at Brownsville and you look at, you know, what has run the economy of Brownsville, it's always been it's, it's geolocation, you know, in the world, you know, the, you know, the civil war, the steamboats, cotton, you know, um, ranching, you know, agriculture, it's always been off of the area. And so that's, I feel like that we're in that new era, in that new renaissance of Brownsville, uh, with this new, you know, with this new industry. And I just want to make sure that we grow in the right direction so that, so, you know, everyone in Brownsville, it lifts all boats. It's not just a select people that are being lifted by this economic boom. Everybody should be feeling it.
Right. Well, if you had, um, if you had a choice of international destinations and I'm, I'm talking primarily Mexico. I mean, do you think we would be better served with a flight to Mexico City? A flight to Cancun or a flight to Monterrey? What, what, I mean, and keep in mind that, you know, you mentioned that there are flights from Matamoros and there's flights from Reynosa and they're cheap, right? But, you know, not everybody wants to cross the bridge, right?
Yeah.
To either Reynosa or Matamoros, right? So if, if you had a, a choice, I mean, what, what do you think? Which of those three destinations you think would better serve Brownsville and maintain that?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I mean, probably I'd have to say Mexico City. I mean, Cancun has a lot of, of flights, you know, uh, international flights as well, but probably have to say Mexico City. It's just, it's the gateway to, you know, the Americas really. I mean, it's La- Latin America. That's where everything runs through there. You know, the, the, the company that I work for, our headquarters is in Dallas and our headcor- and if for, for the world. And our headquarters for Latin America is in Mexico City. You know, Brownsville, if you look at, if you look at Brownsville, where's Brownsville? Brownsville's exactly at the midpoint. Brownsville is five hundred miles from Dallas and five hundred miles from Mexico City.
Oh, wow.
And so, and yeah, and so I think, I think, you, if you look at Brownsville, it's, it's right, it's right in between. And so I think Mexico City, I've been to the new IFA, they have a lot of connections there. I- it's, you know, it's about an hour to get into the city. Um, but uh, but the airport is great, uh, compared to the, the older airport in the city.
All right, let's see here. And let's talk a little bit about um, SpaceX, obviously, um, you know, they've been a big boom to this area. There's no doubt about that, right? And, you know, they have anticipation of doing up to twenty five launches per year. Um, and there's still question of probably more. I was reading an article just about an hour ago where there's concerns in Florida with regards to even allowing SpaceX to launch anything from there because uh, what happened during this last uh, test flight was the starship disintegrated um, over Florida and it actually shut down the airs, the airports for a couple of hours. Right. And then NASA's always been concerned when it comes to launch pad thirty nine A. If you recall, Launchpad Thirty Nine A is a historic launch pad. It is one of their main launchpads. It's historical because it actually was used originally for the Apollo moon flights and it was also used during the shuttle era. So right now SpaceX leases Launchpad Thirty Nine A, right, to do the Falcon nine launches. And Blue Origin, which is Amazon's aerospace company, they actually are leasing Launchpad Thirty Six. And then uh, this, uh, the US Space Force is actually using the rest of it. And of course, one of the reasons Elon Musk back in twenty fourteen chose Boca Chica is because he was having a lot of difficulty at the Cape being able to get NASA's cooperation. Not only that, but having to compete against Boeing, U L A, uh, Blue Origin and trying to fit his idea of what his launch schedule would be versus theirs. You know, he has to compete for scheduling and time. So there could be an opportunity here for increased launches as well. But obviously, as you know, um, you know, SpaceX has been a, a boom, but it's also carries a lot of controversy, right? Uh, you know, we have quite a bit of people that are not happy that they're here, you know? There's been some pretty bad behavior with some of our citizens, you know, from spray painting murals to you know, spray painting, you know, all kinds of vulgarities about Elon Musk, SpaceX and so forth. And I mean, of course, keep in mind Elon doesn't help the situation, right? When he dives into politics. But, you know, it just seems to, it just seems to, you know, uh, get even worse and I mean, what can we do to, to improve the situation with some of our citizens and you know, because tha- that's not behavior that we should be doing, especially for one of our, one, if not the largest employer now in our city. I mean, I get it. I understand why they, uh, why they're upset, you know? They want access to the beach. They're concerned about, about, you know, whether the, the, the beach is, is uh, you know, will continue to maintain pristine. I, I get, I get it, right? But I will say that, you know, Boca Chica Beach today is much cleaner than it was before SpaceX. Because quite frankly, before SpaceX, it was all about dirty diapers, broken beer bottles, rusted fish hooks and on occasion, an abandoned car. You know, all for high school students to have to show up on beach cleanup day to clean after their mess. Now we've got SpaceX down there that is constantly being monitored by the federal government and the state environmental agencies. So there's a lot of focus on ensuring that that beach maintains pristine as it always has. You know, and as I remind some of those folks, they've been launching rockets from Florida for sixty years. And not a single alligator or a manatee has ever been lost due to a rocket launch. I mean, what can we do to improve? And I'm not sure you guys can really do anything to improve it, but here's my point. My point is when we are silent as leaders, silence equals complacency when it comes to these people spray painting, graffitiing, some of our murals, right? It's not good behavior. I mean, what's, what's your take on that?
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, I mean, violence or, you know, defacing things, I mean, can never be acceptable. I mean, uh, I, I believe in our American rights, so nonviolent protesting is, you know, is, you know, you can do that. We're, they're trying to make points. And, and they want to be heard. And so, so.
There's different ways to make points, right?
Yeah, no, I know. And, and, and that's what I'm saying with, 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 with nonviolent protesting. And so, you know, it is a county issue. Uh, it's, 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 it really isn't a city issue, but I think at the end of the day, we have to figure out how to work together. Because, you know, there's, there's people that are upset and there's people that are, you know, that the, you know, it's a business and they've been authorized to do this. It's, 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 it's continuing. So hopefully we can work together and figure out how, you know, now that there's gonna be a city there, okay, are they gonna be responsible for cleaning up the beach? Um, you know, i- do we want access to the beach? Okay, well, you know, we don't want the road to be closed. Well, how do we figure that out? Well, Elon, will you bore something so that we can get to the beach and we don't have to ever wait? You know, so there's creative ideas that we can try to figure out to, you know, what are the issues that we're having? Um, because I, I don't think Elon's going to take his billion dollar investment and go somewhere else.
No, I mean, for, you know, there used to be a lot of talk and uh, back several years ago, there used to be a lot of talk about, you know, one of the comments people would make was that Elon was gonna just eventually pack up and leave, right? And I remember these conversations because I, I've been down at Starbase many times. And uh, you know, people, some people that were down there were saying this and that and so forth. And, but if you go down to Starbase today and you take a look at all the development that has occurred since the very beginning, there's a lot of money that's been poured down there. And of course, you know, they're gonna be their own city, right? They, they're gonna be their own city. It's, it's not a matter of if, it's gonna ma- it's a matter of when, right? And, and so one of the things that, you know, kind of i- in the back of my mind, what are things that we can do? Well, obviously, you know, we've got a situation with Highway Four down there. And by the way, that's a state highway. That's not a city, city highway. It's a state highway, right? But one of the things is if you've gone down there, it's, it can get dangerous sometimes to drive down there now, you know? It really can, right?
Yeah, they, they did redo a big part of, of the, which, you know, which I hadn't been out there in a while and I saw that and I was like, where'd the old road go? But uh, I, I think, yeah, I think it's part of the growing pains. I've seen them taking the lines out there with the electrical, they're bringing, they're bringing utilities. So it's gonna be interesting to see how, you know, the two cities work with each other because yeah, they're building their fifty million dollar shopping center, which I'm assuming is gonna be their town square. That's where the city hall is gonna be. They're gonna build a twenty million dollar school. That's the Adstra School. That's where people are gonna send their kids. So, you know, it reminds me a lot of, you know, when I worked in Del Rio, you know, Del, you know, it's kind of way smaller area, but Del Rio had, you know, their community. And I was leasing the mall over there and, you know, we were tracking a lot of the, the Air Force Base and the Air Force Base was, you know, quite a, a ways away, but they had to come in, um, and they were part of that, that ecosystem. And that was the difference between, you know, Del Rio and Eagle Pass. And Eagle Pass just relied on citizens. And so it's, you know, we're, we're all gonna, we're all gonna be working together. And so I think it's the responsibility of, 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 you know, I think the leaders of Brownsville is to figure out how best we can, we can work together because um, you know, Starbase, it's, it's, it's happening. And so we just gotta figure out.
Let's face it, you know, when SpaceX employees come down from Hawthorne, they're flying into Brownsville, right? They're flying into Brownsville. That's the closest that they can get to get into town and get it, get to Starbase, right?
Well, that's where the, the SpaceX uh, plane's flying in from. So I know, yeah, I, I know. Yeah, I've, some, I think one of the kids I coached, you know, he told me, he's like, I'm going home to California and he takes the SpaceX plane. And so, so people are, you know, these employees are taking, I, I've even heard of like a hangar with Teslas and they get off and they get the Tesla and they go straight to, you know, and they rent their, their airstream or their little house. So they've got, they've got their system, you know, that, that they're working. And so, you know, you've, but you know, a lot of the things that, do we have, you know, a lot of these high paying jobs that are, that are gonna come in and are these high paying jobs going to uh, are, are going to be for Brownsville people? Uh, or are we building our education in a way that we're, we're educating our kids to, to be able, like, you know, like, I remember, like, like, my, my mom, my, my mom grew up here in Brownsville. She grew up, she went to Porter and, you know, she, she worked, she worked in, in, uh, you know, through college. She worked there at Amigaland Mall, at the Amigaland Villas. She was able to, to put herself through college, uh, and get her masters. And then from there, you know, she got, she had a master's in business and that's when the Maquilas were starting. She, I think she graduated in the late eighties. And so she was able to get a job, you know, with one of the Maquilas and work, you know, kind of her way up there. And, and, and so it's just an example of, you know, is the, are those opportunities there for our kids or are they going somewhere else? And, and finding those opportunities? Cause that's what I want to make sure that we do. Is that, is that we create a, an ecosystem, we create a community for, for, for our citizens so that so they can come here and we can continue, you know, because, you know, there's not a lot of people that are generational here and I want to see people to continue and living because it's a great place to grow up. It's a great place to raise a family. Um, and it's, you know, I, I want it to be a great place for our citizens to live and thrive.
Well, that's one of the things that, that I always tell people is, you know, one of the benefits of having SpaceX down here is that when a starship rocket launches from that launchpad, that's because a, the Brown, a Brownsville workforce, which by the way, is eighty percent of that workforce is local. We are showing to the rest of the world, not just the state of Texas, not just the country, but the entire world that our workforce is exceptional. Not only can we build widgets, but we can build interplanetary vehicles that'll one day take us back to the moon, Mars and beyond. And that is a testament to our local workforce that we can build anything. If given the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, no, we have, I mean, we have a phenomenal community here. And so I think it's just, it's a matter of just, you know, showing the world and, and it's great that we're on the world stage. And I think that's the leadership we need. We need, we need leaders that are gonna go out and promote our city. And, 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 and be able to get resources because we can't just put it all on ourselves. We, you know, if we're growing, you know, and we're the shining star of the state and we're, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta get grants from the, you know, from the state, you know, exactly what they did in the airport. It's a great example of, you know, we had a need, we needed to grow it and we were able to get, you know, things from FAA and, and put it all together. And I think that's kind of what you're talking about on the, on the multi-venue is, is try, how do we, you know, in the private sectors, how do we put the deal together? You know, how does it, how does it make sense? Um, long-term sense. And it's, it's all about long-term planning. I remember when I was younger, everyone was always talking about, you know, Vision Twenty Twenty. Well, I mean, we're in Twenty Twenty Five. We need to talk about Vision Twenty Fifty. And, and, and that's, you know, and, and that's what gets me excited. I mean, I'm, I'm thirty five. And so when, you know, the Twenty Fifty is gonna be when I'm sixty. And so, and so that's, you know, that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at long-term, how can we create something long-term and, 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 and good for, you know, generations to come.
Yeah, you know, that's one of the things that we need to kind of change our way of thinking, you know, down here, you know, far too often, we we uh, fall into this trap of being labeled. You know, one of the things that gets me annoyed, quite honestly, is this phrase that you see, especially from these northern journalists where they write these articles and say we're the poorest city in the country. But in reality, we're not because anybody that's ever traveled north of Corpus Christi, if you've ever been to the deep south, if you've ever been to Appalachia, if you've ever been to some of the inner cities, especially in Chicago and places, places like that. If you really want to see poor, there are places in the United States that are truly poor. So I get very offended I, when I hear that, because we're not helping ourselves when we continue to take what somebody writes from the outside and just tout it here, you know, for political purposes, you know, it just irritates me. You know, because I've, I've seen poor in a lot of other places. I've been to town. You know, because I've, I've seen poor in a lot of other places. I've been to towns in the deep south that have no industry whatsoever. They are literally ghost towns. And we're not even there. We're not even close to that, you know? So it's, it, it's something that we need to work on because I think negativity, negativity has been a cancer that we just need to let go. We just need to get, or get rid of. And, and I think we've got to be a little bit more positive because we've got so much to offer. Uh, you know, and so I'm hoping, you know, that, you know, we continue to, to, you know, as we continue to, to have these improvements that we just get rid of this negativity. What's it brought? Cause it really isn't helping the situation. It isn't electing those that peddle that narrative, by the way. There are candidates that have run before on that, on that narrative, you know, and, and it's, it just doesn't help. It doesn't change anything, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I don't, yeah, I, I don't subscribe to that channel at all. Um, so, so at the end of the day, I look at the numbers and, and, and I look at the real numbers that should be looked at, and those are the sales numbers. Uh, and, and that tells you what your buying power of your community is. And so, so here, I, you know, in the company I work for, we have a research department. And they said the valley and New York City are the hardest places to track. And I go, why? I said, because you guys don't use your banks. Yeah, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have a big cash economy here. We have a buy na- we have a bi-national community.
Lots of cash under the colchon.
Yeah, we're, 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 yeah, so, so, so these numbers that are being touted are half the story. It's half the radius. You know, when, when they're looking at our densities, when they're looking at our population, they're not looking at, they're not taking in border crossings into account. They're only looking at what, what, you know, the people that live there. They're not taking the winner Texans into account. There's, there's a, there's a lot of things that go in, that go into our economy. But what I can tell you is that there's not a single Dollar Tree in the city of Brownsville that does, that, that, that does under two million dollars. There's, 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 there's Starbucks that does over four million. There's, there's Whataburgers that do six million. There's, there, there's Chick-fil-A's that do over ten million. The Gucci B does over a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in sales a year. That is bigger than almost any grocery store in the Dallas Fort Worth metroplex in a single store. So, so, you know, at the end of the day, you know, these retailers, these national retailers, they know what's going on here. You know, they know what the buying power is. It's, it, I always call it the, the border phenomenon. You know, they, they don't know what's going on behind the cactus curtain. And, you know, Darwin, you know, uh, Olive Garden, Texas Roadhouse. You know, they, they all do well. You know, Texas Roadhouse does over sixteen million dollars a year. I mean, that's bananas numbers. That's, you know, I think the only thing that's beating it is like the Papa Do and McAllen. I mean, it's, those are crazy numbers.
One second, I, there's, I just got a notice. Somebody's at my door. Give me one second. Something's going crazy. Give me a second here. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah, what happens is I, I've got this camera that captures everything, even a fly that flies by. And so I get, I've been getting notices there. All right. Well, one of the things I wanted to talk about a little bit was with regards, hold on. Forgot, wrong ear. These bows, uh, what's kind of funny is if I flip these over to the, the other side, I can only hear one side, which is kind of weird. I don't know why. Weird. Uh, one of the things I want to touch on as one of our last topics, um, is with regards to, well, one of two topics I want to talk about is with regards to, um, right now, the controversy, obviously with immigration. You know, the city of McAllen has been pretty vocal when it comes to, um, whether local law enforcement will actually cooperate with the federal government or participate. You know, as you know, you know, there have been quite a bit of raids uh, in Los Fresnos, you know, with regards to immigration. And the city of McAllen has been pretty vocal. I commend them for basically taking a position that says that their local police officers will basically continue to protect local citizens, but they're not going to participate uh, whatsoever in, uh, immigration enforcement. Should the city of Brownsville, I don't know if they have put out any kind of comment or position with regards to whether our local police officers will, uh, participate in any future um, immigration raids. I mean, what's your take? Should our local police officers be?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we go back to the, you know, we're, you know, we're under resourced. I mean, we don't, you know, we don't have the bandwidth to go do that. Uh, the, the police should be protecting our community and that's, and that's the role of, of our police. And, and I think that's what, that's what, that's what we should, that's what we should be focused on. Um, and, you know, I know that there's, 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 there's other problems in our community that we still need to address. Uh, safety, and I know on the west side, uh, I've, I've gone through there. There's, there's, there are, you know, there's, 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 there's things that we need to address other than that. But what I do see the city doing, uh, that I don't know if a lot of other cities have done or they're starting to do, is we've worked a, a really well with our NGOs and our nonprofits. The city has been empowering our NGOs and our nonprofits. And I think if we continue to do that, that's, I, I think that's the pathway forward is how we, you know, we just work with the process. Because I think the feds and the state, they're putting a lot of money into this. And so I think the city just needs to be focused on making sure that we feel protected. Because I have a lot of clients that, that, you know, they hear, you know, what they say on the news and it's, you know, they're like, Louis, is everything safe down there? And I feel safe, you know? I, I work a few blocks away from the border. I, you know, I walk two blocks to get to my office, you know, I feel safe. And so, you know, I commend the, you know, the work that our, our police officers are doing to protect our city. And as our city continues to grow, that's, you know, my plan is to make sure that we equip them with everything we need. And I know that the city's working on, you know, the emergency management center that, that they're looking on trying to, to build for, you know, fire and, 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 uh, police and, you know, for when we have hurricanes. I mean, those are things that we need to be prepared for. And, and that's where our resources need to go. Is, you know, is looking at, you know, protecting our whole community, especially as it grows.
Right, right. And, uh, I want to talk a little bit about, um, accessibility, obviously. Um, you know, uh, one of the things that, you know, a lot of people like to see in their elected leaders is accessibility, right? Um, you know, there are, I'll be honest with you, there are some commissioners that do a better job being accessible than others. Maybe some are shy, right? Maybe some are shy or whatever, but, you know, uh, you know, there's some that, that do a better job than others and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna name names or anything like that. But will you, will you commit to being accessible to, to your constituents?
Yes, I mean, I mean, the, the way I look at it is I'm the representative for the district and I need to be accessible to the district to hear, you know, the concerns, what's going on. Because if, if I'm not accessible, then I don't know what's going on. It's just my opinions and what I see. Yeah, I'm not everywhere. And so gotta talk to the citizens, gotta be accessible. Cool thing about me is like, my office is right next door to city hall. So if someone wants to come meet, jump to city hall, come meet with them, see what's going on or go out, you know, and see them. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I've been a salesman for a long time. Eh, you know, I've got a lot of, I got a lot of signs in the marketplace that all have my cell phone number. Uh, so my plan is to, you know, have that accessibility, you know, being able to balance things. Um, you know, having an assistant or someone that helps, that's probably going to be, you know, the way, you know, they, they started paying the commissioners. That's probably what I'm going to use to, you know, have somebody to kind of manage everything because, you know, at the end of the day, I can't, can't, you can't juggle everything and I kind of keep my day job because I kind of pay my bills. But at the same, you, you know, you just got to build the system in place, you know, and making sure, you know, at the end of the day, it's just, you know, in sales, um, it's, it's always about just getting back to everyone, you know, like, you know, making sure that all the reds, you know, at the end of the day, you know, did I get back to all those reds, you know, that I didn't, that I have the missed calls, that I answer all my voicemails, that I go through all the emails. And honestly, it's just, it's just, you know, the care to get back to everybody, you know, because, you know, you see those calls coming in and you either forget to do it. Or you forget about it and that just tells you, you know, you don't care. And so that's what I want people to understand about me. Is that, you know, I'm from District Four. I grew up eighteen years in District Four. I've been back for five. So I care about District Four and I care about its needs. So I want to hear about, you know, what's going on. And so I'm going to make sure that I build like a system in place that allows me, you know, to be responsive because that's usually what it is. It's just a breakdown in the system of not being able to get to everybody.
Yeah. Well, one of the things I will say, you, you've, you've impressed me because for once, at least as far as I can remember, you're probably the candidate with the most social media experience, you know? I told somebody the other day, he's on, he, he's on social media with videos as much as I am, you know? I, I, I may ask him to be my co-host for some show eventually, you know?
No, I mean, I, I think that's, that's one of the things I, you know, I think my, so we're taking a very strategic approach to, to this, you know, I'm, I'm a business guy. So I just said, you know what? You know, I, I knew I was going to run probably in September or October of last year. And so what I started doing is I just started talking with people, you know, letting them know, hey, I'm thinking about doing this. You know, you're trying to get those feelers out, seeing, you know, what type of support I can get, you know? Do we have, you know, because you're not going to run, you're not going to go raise money, you're not going to spend your own money if you don't see a pathway, you know, to trying to win. And so started, started doing that thing. And then, you know, holidays came around. And so right after the holidays, you know, we just worked our, our way backwards. You know, we, we did a ninety day plan and then we started talking about, okay, what are the things that we want to unfold in our campaign? What, what is our biggest issue? Our biggest issue is that nobody knows who is Louis Tejera. And so that, that, and so how do you get your name out there? You know, and I'm a young guy. We're trying to, we're trying to bring out younger voters. Um, I, I ran a statistic and there's twenty-three percent of the total electorate of District Four is under the age of twenty-five. So, yeah, and so if we can push, you know, a hundred or a hundred and fifty of them out, well then now we're creating this new electorate. Can we inspire people to come and vote for us? Because that's the only way that they're going to come vote. Because statistics say, you know, the people that everyone goes after is the most likely voters. So my goal is to go after those my, most likely voters, but also to try to inspire people. And the only way you inspire people is by being authentic and by talking about the issues. And so that's, that's what our campaign is trying to do. So here's who Louis is. Here's our, our, our four issues. Grow the economy. You know, we want to en- enhance our infrastructure. We want to protect our neighborhoods and, and we want to restore our district and cultural treasures. That, those are our four topics. And we're unfolding that slowly, you know, as the weeks progress. You know, we, we did economic development. We're going to start talking about our neighborhoods. We're going, we're actually going to go out there with video and we're going to show, these are things that are not code compliant. These are things that we need to go and address. You know, wires are tired here. You know, District Four is super close to the recycling area. You know, why is there stuff i- in front of the houses and not in the alleys? You know, we need to educate our community and let them know, hey, the alleys is where we're going to be picking things up. But if at the, as a city, we're just picking them up and not saying anything, you know, then, you know, we're just creating a habit. And so it's just looking at those things and, and just, you know, being the representative for, for, for District Four. And so, um, so we're starting to unfold that. That's, that's where we're at. We're, we're excited to, you know, I think we're, we've been pushing some people to, to, to post too, because at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're trying to set ourselves apart. And, 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 and that's, you know, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to, you know, that's where we're putting our dollars. Is, 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 is in that we want to show that, you know, I'm taking this seriously. It's not just just not putting my name out there and saying, hey, vote for me. It's like, no, I'm, I'm going to put my name out there. I'm going to put my reputation. I'm going to talk about what the real issues are. And if this is what the voters like, this is who they want to be the representative, we'll vote for Louis, number four on the ballot for District Four.
Well, definitely, uh, you know, you definitely have been very, uh, active in social media and I'm glad to have somebody that, who, who's probably just as active as I these days. And, and because believe me, as, as the person interviewing somebody else, I've had candidates that I literally have to like drag them into the studio, right? Cause you know, for whatever reason, not everybody wants to be on camera and it's not easy. It's not easy. I'll be the first one to tell you it's not easy. And, you know, we're always, me and my team, we're always looking at the viewer demographics, you know? The age categories, who's watching what, what are they not watching, what are they not interested? What do we need to toss out, you know? So I, I, I get it. I mean, I, I go through it myself every day, trying to figure out different ways to improve, you know, and attract, you know, uh, younger audiences. Cause I think that's one of the, the key things that I personally is, is I, I'm looking for those younger audiences.
I can't wait till after the election, win or lose, we are going to come out with some blooper videos.
Yes, definitely.
Because we, trust me, at the beginning, oh man, it was rough. My social media manager was like, Louis, you need to stop, you know, acting like a robot. You need to be authentic. It's just, you know, so it's, it, it, it's, it's hard, you know, when you're in front of a camera. But once you get comfortable with it and you kind of break that, you know, it, it, it flows. And so I've really, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a great experience. I'm learning a ton about the city. I'm learning a ton about my district. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to, you know, whatever happens, you know, it's going to be a great experience. And, you know, win or lose, it's, I don't think it's going to be the last time you're going to see Louis Tejera on a ballot.
I don't know. I'll invite you back whenever you want, you know, regardless. So, you know. Uh, one last question, and, and this is basically more of a personal question. Some candidates don't like for me to ask this question. Some feel a little comfortable, some, some don't, you know, some don't have a problem with it. But how, how, um, has faith played a, a role in not only, you know, your life, but also your decision to run for public office? Uh, and, um, you know, how, how has that played a role if, if any?
Uh, I mean, um, I mean, faith has always been a core to, you know, who I am and I think how I was raised. I mean, I was raised in the Catholic school systems here in, here in, in, in Brownsville. I went to Texas Christian University. So it's always been, it's always been part of, of my life. I think, you know, the values that I have. I think that, I think they're instrumental. I mean, I think those, that's, th- those were my building blocks. Uh, most recently, uh, you know, you know, you know, things happen in life, you know, where you, your faith gets tested or, or you start thinking about your faith more. Um, you know, about two years ago, I was in a fire in Port Isabel. And, and that was really a big, you know, when, I've never been in a life or death situation before. I opened the door, black smoke was building, building out of the only stairwell. I had to jump out of the, the balcony from the third floor and, you know, catch myself on an ante. I mean, it was, you, you know, and so those things happened and, you know, my belongings were burned down and I had to go through this. And so it was, it was really a eye-opening experience and and really, you know, you know, taking a jump into try to become a leader for the community is not an easy thing. But, you know, the perspective that I had really shifted, uh, really shifted eh, in those moments. And, and, you know, I know that, you know, you know, God gives you talents and gives you skills and, and I, I want to share those skills with my community.
Yeah. All right. Well, believe it or not, we have gone on for two hours.
No way.
Yeah, two hours, believe it or not, which is great. Not a problem. You know, I usually, I usually try to limit uh, things to forty-five minutes, but when I'm having fun, I pretty much let the clock run, you know, so.
No, it was, it was a great conversation. I just want to thank you for, for putting it together. I mean, we don't have a lot of opportunities as forums and being able to, to get in front of candidates. So, you know, thank you for, you know, wrangling everybody. So it just, it gives the voters something to look at. And, you know, if they don't catch us live, I know you, you put it on all platforms. So it's great to have, have a platform for us to just kind of talk about it. Cause who knows, this might be the only time, you know, I'm, I, I get interviewed for the selection.
Well, definitely we enjoyed having you. And I know that the election, uh, the early votes starts, uh, what day and they go on?
It's April, April, April twenty-second and the twenty-ninth will be early voting. And then May third, uh, will be the election.
All right. Well, everybody, as you know, um, there are city elections coming up. Mr. Tejera is running for city commissioner for District Four. And as I remind everybody, uh, if you don't vote, you can't complain afterwards. Louis, it was great to have you on. You're welcome at any time. Win or lose, you want to come back and co-host with me on something, you're more than welcome to. You know, I, I appreciate you coming on and I, I appreciated getting to know you and your family this weekend. So.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you.
Really, really love talking to your mom and your dad. They're great people. And, um, like I said, um, good luck. And, uh, we'll see you soon again.
Sounds good. We'll see you out there. Thank you, Daniel, for what you do.
Bye-bye.